I would like to open this meeting, welcome everyone. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and Governing Body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which that board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. And, please, you today, Chair? Oh, no. Supervisor Finnegan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have introduction of any new employees today? Being none, we'll move on. Report of any actions from closed session?
Just briefly, you have authorized me to pursue looking into joining a possibility this brief on the JHP case.
Thank you. The Chair requests any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Jay, or wait, hold item number 14.
Yes, number 14 is being taken care of, it doesn't require action by the board.
Okay. Supervisor Sullivan, would you like to report out today?
Sure. Had a two-by-two, two-by-two meeting with Supervisor Hemmingson and with the Smith River Rancheria on one of their sewer line projects that they have out, out off, I believe, South of the border. Attended a Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting, also attended a local transportation commission meeting. Took my son to his first Oregon State game, well, actually technically his second, he was seven months old on his first one, but, and we got a chance to watch our local boy, Cody Hoffman, play lights out. He was phenomenal. He had over 162 yards catching and a, and as well as kickoff returns and a touchdown. He really, you know, made us all proud in the pro, you know, half of Crescent City was there, so that helped, but he really made us all proud and has done a phenomenal job and I'm really looking forward to see, I know Rick and Cindy Hoffman are really proud of him, but I'm looking forward to seeing him play at the next level because he's, I'm pretty sure he's NFL bound. So it was a great one, besides the fact my son was happy for Cody, but he was upset the Beavers' loss, so, we had a conversation about them not being really good this year, so. Had another meeting with the Smith River Rancheria and county staff on the same project. Attended the city council meeting regarding solid waste, and that's on our agenda, and then later today with the joint city-county meeting. Had a meeting with the sheriff, District Attorney's Office, and county council, as well Supervisor Finnegan regarding the marijuana dispensaries in the community. Had a meeting with Green Diamond and Representative Laco regarding Green Diamond's future projects for some land use in the community. And then, probably the cool thing this morning, and I hadn't read the paper until just a few minutes ago, but my son was on the, on the picture, on the second part of the paper regarding the chickens he raised through, raised through the Lake Girl Grange Project. I gotta thank Helen Ferguson, the Grange, for getting him involved in that. He wasn't really jazzed at the beginning, but you can see it's really taken off since then, and I need to thank Supervisor McClure because he presented her classroom, and the District Attorney, John Alexander, for arranging that, and apparently he was only supposed to speak for five minutes at this thing and it turned into 40, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm really proud of him, he did a great job with it, and now we're, he's got all these other plans to raise other animals, so, we'll see how that goes, so.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, thank you. I had, I had several meetings with, or I don't know whether you want to call them meetings or not, but several constituents came in about concerns and some plans and stuff. I had one constituent that wanted to know if, that we could get a plan together for Adopt a Road in Del Norte County, where, you know, you see them on the highways where you adopt a road and there's out there picking up trash and stuff, because we've got several main arteries in our county that, that could use a little cleanup, and this person was interested in, in maybe doing Washington Boulevard, which would be, which I think's a great idea. Also had a constituent concerned about our low-income housing projects that we're supporting and competing with the local renters, local landlords, they, they can't seem to rent their houses now, and with these low-income projects seems to take away from, from, from what they're trying to do as a, as a business, so I'm not sure how that competing part fits, but whether they can change their housing to low-income renting, or how that works, but be looking into that. And then I had several people talking about the solid waste authority and the issues there. That was just, I don't know, probably eight or 10 different people that, that came in about that stuff. But also had Pelican Bay Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. Most of the discussion was, talked about was about staffing and how the, the new rules and regulations are going to affect their staffing. They don't think they're going to have a problem, matter of fact, they think that they're going to be just fine as far as staffing, which they're, they're doing better, but they're, think they're going to do better after this, this, these whole projects get implemented. As Supervisor Sullivan said, we had a couple of meetings with the Smith River Rancheria on their sewer projects along with staff, and hopefully we're getting that all worked out. Had a local transportation commission meeting. Supervisor Finnegan and I met with harbor staff to discuss some possible funding options, gap funding options. I was called to jury duty and got all fixed up and ready to go, and by the time I got there, they had canceled it. They didn't cancel it the night before, but, and as Supervisor Sullivan also said, met with Green Diamond and Laco Associates on some projects they've got going. And then met with Mike Thompson, some of the business community got together with, with Mike Thompson at Chris Howard's house, I think there was a picture in the paper, an article on that. Most of the discussion was over the economy, healthcare, the overregulation, education, and then there was some discussion about the illegal alien requirements, so, and that was about it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, my, I've had a fairly quiet couple of weeks, which has enabled me to read almost 1,000 pages of the Coastal Commission Report this month, so I've been able to do that. I met with our CTA and everything is okay with our local transportation, however, we do see possibility of some shortfall and we'll have to take a look at the possibility of adjusting routes. We, we were able to adjust one route from Klamath with partnership of the local school there that I think is going to work. We, I met, Solid Waste had its meeting, and I also met with the harbor and discussed possibilities of bridge funding and how we can look at that. The bridge funding is primarily because what happens is that when the state Department of Emergency Services authorizes an expenditure, then they get the bill, and then we had, the harbor has 37 days, I think, to pay the bill. However, many times the state money doesn't come in until much later, which makes for a need for some kind of bridge funding, and so it's anticipating that if we can come up with a plan of bridge funding with phase one, that plan then could replicate itself in phase two and will be very workable, because the ultimate goal is to get the harbor back to a place that is a working harbor and possibly even a stronger, better harbor than we've ever had, so that, I think there's some, there's some heavy lifting that's going to have to be done to make sure that that problem is solved, but I think it's possible. The Historical Society had their annual meeting and recognized Rick Bennett as the Volunteer of the Year, which is wonderful, because the work that he's done on the Ruby Van Deventer Project has, has put us on the map statewide in relationship to what kind of fauna that we have here, and it's been well-received statewide. The senior board met and we're still grappling with what to do, because it looks as if it's a, about a $385,000 note that's going to be called because of the management of the previous program, of the weatherization program, and it's, which then, that meeting spurred me to have conversations with both Wes Chesbrough and Congressman Thompson in relationship to how we can make sure this works and how we can fix what has happened, because it is fairly frightening to think about the senior center and their funding stream being compromised. The chickens are doing well at McCarthy Center, and Mike's son was very, very nervous at first and then just moved right into it and started telling the kids about how they could do reports and how they could do research and how they could raise their own chickens, and it was, it was really nice to see someone reach out and, and communicate at such a young level. And that's probably about it.
Thank you. Supervisor Finnegan?
Sure, I had a couple of meetings, most of them were on the telephone, I didn't have to leave the area, which was nice for a change. Had a CSAC call-in, which is the State Association of Supervisors. The focus on the first one, we actually do this every Wednesday morning with the rest of the officers and with staff, is, the focus was the ballot initiative that we're trying to craft for the constitutional guarantees for the funding for not just AB 109, but the full realignment programs that are coming to the counties whether we like it or not. We also had some discussions regarding what we need to address as far as what might have fallen through the cracks in AB 109 and something that is popping up that is the length of the sentencing, so while, if they're doing, instead of doing concurrent sentencing, if they're stacking sentences while they may be three years, I think there's, what you read about is the historical, excuse me, the hysterical ones of the 24 years of somebody sentenced to county jail in Riverside, 22 years, somebody in Sacramento County, and, you know, that wasn't the intention, so we'll go back, we'll probably put a time limit on it in conversations with the governor and tweak that a bit, but Tom's going to be making a report, and I think we're doing quite well and, and on track. Had a call with the National Forest County Schools Coalition as a board member, and of course the focus is what are we going to do if the Congress does not extend the funding? And while we've seen that decrease where we've gone from 2.4 million down to 1.8 or whatever it is now, it's hovering around 2 million, if we lose that funding, if something isn't done, we, the last payment will come in December of this year, and that is for our schools, probably a million dollars, and for the county, it's for our road fund. And rather than getting into some of the hysteria of laying off half the road crew, it's something that we're working on. There's an assembly bill that they're working on that has to do with forest management. Unfortunately, that is something we've been working on for some time, and it's not going to cure itself for the next couple of years. The Senate has one to extend it anywhere from three to five years with a little bit of a ramp down, perhaps just 5%, so what we're really hoping for is that they just extend the payment process through the National Forest Schools Coalition and allow us to work on forest management, maybe something over a five or 10-year period. Continuing to work on that. Met with the harbor, I think in depth, you've heard from every other supervisor here, so I'm not going to go into that, other than to say that we are involved and it is a community issue and, and our economy is dependent on it, and we're going to do what we need to do. Had a meeting also that's been mentioned with the sheriff regarding pot cooperatives and dispensaries, and the public will be well aware of what our intention is here as soon as we have some more legal paperwork done, but that's going to change in the near future. And we had another call with the Board of Directors and the officers of the California State Association, and we're now talking about a coalition. If you go for the ballot for the constitutional guarantees, while some of the polling showed that it was good as long as we didn't tie it to funding streams, there are other members like the city, League of Cities, that want an increase in taxes, the police chiefs want something different than the sheriffs, so we're trying to measure where that political fallout's going to be, where the negative's going to be, and how to be successful in a campaign, and we'll have a meeting on Friday regarding that as well. Had a lot of calls from people in Klamath dealing with Community Services District down there, dealing with their water issues down there, and then also had several meetings with constituents regarding the JPA for the solid waste, and that was about it.
Thank you. I also had a Del Norte solid waste meeting and phone calls also, fielding calls from constituents regarding actions to be taken or not taken today regarding the JPA. I had agenda review for this board meeting. I went to Weaverville for an air quality management district meeting. Once a year, we hold the meeting in Weaverville because it's a regional board, once a year we have it here, and then the rest of the time I go to Humboldt County for it. I have to say, it was beautiful up there, it was 75 degrees, it was like summer. Last evening, I also had a meeting with, at the, at the harbor with Rich Young, Bob Black, Kevin Hartwig, Word Stover, and Pat Daley, and just got to listen to a presentation from them. I also went to Corvallis to the BYU game, I didn't know you were there, Mike. Of course, there's so many people, we'd never see each other, but it was great. My, my daughter and her husband are very good friends with Rick and Cindy, so they had gotten extra tickets and invited me and my husband along, and I just think it was wonderful, the community support that he had up there. There were hundreds of people from Crescent City. It, it shows, in a little small community, how we can all jump on board, because, you know, that's our local boy, you know, now all of a sudden he's everybody's, everybody's boy, but really enjoyed it. My granddaughter even had some pictures taken with Cody, because her friends wouldn't believe that she was friends with Cody Hoffman, so, it was kind of cute and fun. I also have, my oldest daughter lives up close, so I was able to have breakfast and lunch with her one day. And tomorrow, I'll be heading for Sacramento for CMSB meeting, and that's it for me. We're five minutes early for public comment, so, everybody okay with taking the consent agenda at this time?
Sure.
Do I have a motion for, oh, pardon me. Do we have any public comment from the, the audience on the consent agenda?
I would move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jeremy, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes, minus number seven, I have a conflict of interest on that.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes. And in that consent agenda was to approve a 30-year longevity increase for the Director of Health and Human Services, and I would just like to acknowledge Gary for your years of service to this county. We appreciate it. Thirty years, we should be throwing a party or something.
Also, how old are you?
He started when he was eight.
Yeah. Okay, we're still early here. David, what you have, that was in our consent agenda?
Yes. Well, actually, you have it.
Oh, it's a time, I'm sorry, and we do have someone showing up for it, so.
Okay.
I better hold on.
Budget transfer.
Let's move to item 18 and 19, budget transfers.
Move to approve. Item 18 and 19, which is itemized as 10 dash 01 and 10 dash 02.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any public comment on these two items? Hearing none? Jeremy, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes. And I, I just want to mention, I don't know that it's of any, any interest to anyone, but at a request from a department head who is very conscious, conscious of his time, has requested that in the future agendas, we move budget transfers right after consent That way, they don't have to sit here during the whole meeting and can get back to their business at hand, so. Pardon me?
Good idea.
Sounds good.
We, we did have one concern from our clerk that was concerned about if there was a plan that had to be adopted and if we took the budget transfer that may have been tied in with that first. In, in that case, we'll deal with it at a later time. Don't hold much, do.
Petron serves?
Actually, your official clock is up on.
Oh, that's true, that's not my official clock anymore, is it? Okay, then we will move on to public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please let me your comments to three minutes or less. Do we have any public comment today? Where's Richard?
I just wanted to bring before the board information that there was a change in the process for what we call AB 900.
I, even though.
Sheriff Dean Wilson, down there down.
Thank you, we know who you are, but for the record.
Absolutely. To bring before the board that there have been structural changes to what we call AB 900, and this was an initiative that was passed several sessions back, several years ago. That funding was for reallocation beds to the state of California. That money as part of this AB 109 initiative has been opened up for jail monies that can be utilized for construction. This is the only first time since 92 that such monies have been available to counties. There is roughly a billion dollars being put aside for small counties for jail construction. There was a request for a letter of interest. I have placed that letter of interest in, there is no commitment from us. The reason why I placed this letter of interest in is the fact that there was a 10% match attached to this AB 900 funds, that has been waived, and it is now adjustable from nothing to, to as much as 10%. So, it puts us back in the ballpark where this money is at least a topic conversation, and because these monies don't become available, and we do have a, a facility that does not meet current standards for Title 15 because of its age, half the facility that we currently have is 1963, the other half is 92, and so we have a hodgepodge mix, and the condition and location of the jail currently being in the run-up zone makes it very problematic for several issues, but also age of it, of the facility. We have no current level, high-security level cells in our current jail, and with this new status that we are now having to take inmates on a long-term, our first one has come to us, we have one inmate that is sentenced to six years, this was our first inmate, just came to us, so, you know, this, this AB 109 process has already started here in Del Norte County, we're going to see the results of it, and as such, you know, this letter of interest was placed in by myself with Jay's signature to look into this funding, if it is a possibility at least, and this is just to inform the board at this time.
Thank you, Sheriff Wilson. You know, I have to say, I, I don't know where I read it, or if I dreamt it, or what, I was under the impression that, you know, prior to AB 109, anyone sentenced over a year would go to prison. I thought this was now changed to three years, under three years, we would keep them here. When I'm hearing this 22 years in Sacramento and now six years here, it's like, boy, that...
Yeah, 20, 23 years in Sacramento, 14 years in Riverside, six years here. The condition is, is that if they qualify as the non-non-non, and they are sentenced, they can be sentenced consecutively, in other words, if they are sentenced to seven charges, each one allowing as much as three years of commitment time. This one that we had, this gentleman that we had, three years on his original charge, but there was an enhancement, that, that enhancement brought another three additional years, so he'll do six years here and, or up to six years, halftime three years for credit in, in Del Norte County. So, because of the way that the section is written, because of the structure of it, we can have inmates that'll serve 120 years if they're, you know, sentenced to consecutive...
Three-year terms.
You know, three-year terms, exactly, with enhancements, because enhancements don't count towards the overall sentence time, so, yeah, we're, we're going to see this, it's, like I say, it wasn't a, it's not a great deal for counties, I, you know, I was totally against this shift, largely because it, it really impacts local counties, especially small counties, because we don't have neither the funding coming to us nor the ability to do a lot of the, the programs that are going to be necessary for this kind of, these kind of programs. Anyway, we'll get to that more later.
Supervisor McClure has a question for you. I have a question on the, on the application process. Is it going to be phased where we're applying for feasibility and design, and then for, to implement, are there, is it coming in two chunks?
Yes, basically, there is, there is a two-trunk process that has been implemented, at least in the first phase. Now, this is a new ballgame, and so, and so I'm not sure exactly how there, I know with many of the departments that they were, that they were working with, because of the upfront money that, that many small communities couldn't afford, they have actually allowed for that to be a part of the process, so, again, it's a discussion, it's not a commitment at this point.
So we don't know what the applicant, we don't know if we have that first trunk where we could...
Right. At this point in time, we don't have that. What I'm doing is, is I'm researching with many of the smaller counties that are already committed to this program and are in it, they were in it first phase, and now they're, they're starting the second phase process, looking at those facilities that they're putting up, because they're smaller facilities similar to our design, and if we...
I'm just worried about the, the making sure that even if it's 100% match, we need to be concerned that the design, the siding, and all of the preliminary...
Are included, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, close the public comment period. Item number three, approve and accept a proclamation in recognition of United Way Month, October 2011. Supervisor Finnegan is going to read the proclamation.
We have a proclamation of the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors, state of California in recognition of United Way Month, October 2011. Whereas the 2011-2012 United Way Campaign officially opened on September 17, 2011, with its 18th Annual Day of Caring to raise funds to help Humboldt and Del Norte communities with daily needs and the increasing needs of a changing economy. And whereas the mission of the United Way is to mobilize the caring power of the community to change lives, thereby improving the overall quality of life in the communities we serve. The United Way Campaign works to advance the common good by focusing on critical building blocks that we all need for a good life, and whereas the United Way works... the United Way works on improving people's access to critical health services and preventing healthcare education, or, excuse me, and preventative healthcare education, and works with partners to target childhood obesity through physical activity. And whereas the United Way helps children and youth achieve their potential through education, providing in-school tutoring through the Schools of Hope, and also partners with the Decade of Difference, the 2020 initiative, to get children ready for success in college, work, and life. And whereas the United Way, through their Humboldt Community Switchboard, helps families become more financially stable and independent, partnering with the county, nonprofit organizations, and businesses, and supporting basic needs while increasing financial understanding and accessing to important services through information and referral. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar that the month of October 2011 is United Way Month in Humboldt County as well as in Delmar County. The board calls upon all citizens to give, advocate, and volunteer, promote Living United, thereby improving the lives of our families, friends, and neighbors, passed and adopted this 25th day of October 2011.
Could I, sorry, just a point order. Do we need to vote on this, on the proclamation?
I would move that we approve and accept a proclamation.
Second.
I was going to say it was in the consent agenda.
It's right here.
Oh, excuse me. No, it wasn't. Am I? All approved?
Yes.
Aye, yes.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
On behalf of United Way and on behalf of our communities in Humboldt and Delmar, thank you so much for this recognition and time. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming up to accept it.
Thank you. I do want to say a couple words, if I may, and I know on behalf of Bonnie Finley, and Bonnie Finley and Steve Gottler are on their way. As far as, we've been coordinating closely with Humboldt-Delmar County Office of Education on the Schools of Hope program, which has been a phenomenal program. It's in its second year, and Bonnie Finley has been doing a phenomenal job with it. And she's, she's with us strong with Schools of Hope and expanding to five schools this year in Delmar County. There is 14 schools in Humboldt County. And just to back up a little bit, as far as the, I'm talking about Schools of Hope as a, one of the major programs, because I think it really is a great example of us coming together. And two years ago, United Way, we merged with United Way of the Wine Country in Sonoma County to strengthen our Humboldt and Delmar United Way benefits, community benefits. And Schools of Hope is a, is a great example of how we can really come together and all benefit. Two years ago, Dr. Roland Richmond and I were at the County, United Way of the Wine Country Board in Sonoma, in Santa Rosa, and they were talking about this new initiative, Schools of Hope. Well, both of us raised our hands and said, we want it in our counties now. And so we were able to, to start Schools of Hope last year. Sonoma County started it last year as well. And we just, we saw the need. We saw it as a great part, addition to our communities to really strengthen our kids. And, and they've found through research that if kids can, young children, if they are at the third grade level at reading proficiency, they have a far greater chance for success in school, in life, in everything that they do. And, and oftentimes, in fact, one of my associates here is Sandy Scott, who's with us, has said that it's been proven that prisons, when they want to know how many extra beds should we add to their prison establishment, they go back and say, how many, how many third graders are reading below proficiency level? And that's the number that they use to add beds in the prison. So it's been proven that, research over and over, it's been proven that if kids aren't reading at the third grade level, their chances of really going in different directions that are really detrimental happens. So it's really, really imperative that we invest in our kids at a foundational level, which will improve our, our communities tenfold. So I've handed to you, and please take time to read it at your own leisure, is the information, a fact sheet on Schools of Hope, and some of the, where this year we'll have, we're increasing, in Humboldt and Delmar, we'll have over 100 tutors, volunteer tutors. So it's about bringing in volunteers, retired teachers, business people, HSU students, other students, bringing volunteers into the schools and having them trained to work with kids on a one-to-one level. And so it not only improves their reading skills, but it gives them that extra confidence, a connection with another outside person who believes in them, and for self-esteem, it really helps young children. And we're increasing from 180 kindergarten and first grade students served, we're increasing it to 300 students being served. And this year, we are hiring, we have part-time, Bonnie Finley is working in Delmar, and we have a part-time volunteer Schools of Hope coordinator going to be working in the Humboldt County area. And here again, it's, it's about living united and combining resources, because we're benefiting by, it's not just Humboldt and Delmar, but the Sonoma County, Lake and Mendocino, and, and really maximizing all the resources that we have together. So it's a real smart approach. So. And just want to say, take time to read the brochure. The building blocks, United Way has changed a little bit in that the last couple of years, as far as their emphasis is really on community benefit. So we look at, we look at education, we look at income, and we look at health. And it's all about partnering and collaborating with different organizations in the community. How can we enhance the different resources that we have available to us so that more of our people are going to benefit? And that's really, the emphasis is really partnership and collaborating, and let's increase the community benefit. So that's where we're coming from. And the other thing I did want to mention is, for a year, probably about 10 years, Humboldt County has had a community switchboard. We call it the Humboldt Community Switchboard, which is an information referral-based system to help people tap into resources that are available to them, people in need. And that's been going on for about 10 years. And we've been working, a community group has been working on a 2-1-1 plan for probably about six years or more. And we're, we've made some great strides in moving forward to really implementing a 2-1-1 program, which will just take our community switchboard up a notch and, and expand the services. And that is, we're looking at 2012 for that to happen. And things are falling into place where I think it's going to be a reality. And working with Delmar and the community of Delmar, and seeing how Delmar can tap into that as a resource for you is something we definitely want to be doing. So, and it's, it's a public safety issue. It's, it's going to enhance our ability to respond when we have disasters, and I think it's going to be tremendous for us. So. Anyway, I'm a resource for you, working closely with the County Office of Education, working closely with Robert Lassacco, and who's been a tremendous support. And so I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have a quick question for you.
Please.
When you mentioned the volunteers, the mentors that work 1-1.
Yes.
Can they be under 18? Will you train, like, teenagers? Do, do any of this?
You know, I, I think it depends on their training. As far as young, young people can, teenagers, I think, can definitely participate in the program. They have to go through a training. I know Bonnie Finley has been very protective in starting the program. She's been using, involving, engaging retired teachers. So in Delmar here, we have probably 19 to 20 retired teachers who have been involved in the Schools of Hope program. In Humboldt, as far as we've been tapping into HSU students. So, so students who are going into teaching are now getting involved in the Schools of Hope program. And quite frankly, I was talking to the Boys and Girls Club, the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club, and I think this is a tremendous opportunity for teenagers to step in and get engaged, volunteer, help other younger children to really improve their skills. So for me, I think it's the full range. It's just important that we have training for them.
Well, that's what I thought. It kind of would go hand-in-hand with, like, the Big Brother and Big Sister programs.
Exactly. Exactly. And I think that's.
We talked about pulling all of your resources together.
That's right.
That's something else that I think would be incorporated in.
I think that would be an awesome idea, and I think it needs to be expanded to include young people.
No, I think the programs, I've heard some of the successes. It's my Aunt Bonnie that's, that's working with you.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. And, and as well as a lot of retired teachers, and it, it makes a lot of sense. It's, it really is, why not bring that resource? And a lot of them want to work with kids anyway, so.
That's right. That's right. People get very excited. I know Roland and I were going, we want it now. And we were lucky enough to jump in and be able to do it. So, so thank you so much for your time, and Bonnie is wonderful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, this time, the Board of Supervisors is going to adjourn, and we will convene to the Board of Equalization and conduct a public hearing for an application of change of assessment on Assessor's Parcel Number 10108207. Leave me half our audience. Oh, there's Bonnie. Bonnie, I see you just came in. I just wanted to acknowledge you.
She's in here.
Oh, she has been? I didn't see her at all. Oh. I thought she said they were coming. Okay. And is the taxpayer here?
I just have a point of clarification. Historically, we have received at least the applicant's information, where we have seen what the request is, and we have, there's been a form that we actually see where the, where the applicant has put in what they consider their value, and we then had the current value, and that, all of that came to us before this meeting. And I have absolutely no paperwork, so it's, it's just a point of clarification of why we lack information.
Hi, I'm Louise Wilson, County Assessor. You can receive the application, but no further information. You sit in as the judge. You can't be biased in any way. You can't hear any of the information before this actual hearing. You hear the taxpayers' presentation and our presentation, and you make your decision upon those two presentations. So other than just receiving the form and no other information, yes, you can do that. You can receive that information, but if there's an attachment, you will not receive that.
By that you mean, like, the parcel map?
You can receive the parcel map, but sometimes they'll give the reasons why on the back, and they'll give a little scenario. That is information that you have before the hearing, and it'd be just like you're going into the judge and that's making a decision. You can't have any of that to form some kind of, maybe bias.
We didn't receive any.
Right. We can, in fact, Jeremy talked to me about that, and she just called me, what, about an hour ago, and we determined that you can get the front page. There was some conflict at that, but no other information. Steve, do you have in your packet the application? Steve will have the application too in his packet.
I think it would be appropriate for you to have the name of the taxpayer.
Yes.
And the actual appeal itself. It's a one-page form, so.
Yes.
That should certainly be provided to you as part of your packet, and I wasn't aware it was.
And I think prior to anyone giving testimony, even.
Yes.
So I would ask for it now.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
May I make a comment as well? Usually when other departments are presenting an item, I expect at least a board letter coming from that department, and I did not receive anything, which is why you only have the letter. So.
Yeah, I would anticipate every other appeal we've had, we've had some documentation demand, so, yeah. I mean, we've had that in every, every other appeal.
Just the application.
Yes, you can have the main application, just no other information. Okay. And we'll make sure, Steve's going to give that to you now.
Okay, good.
County Council, typically there's a process that you go through, some initial information. Is that going to happen here?
I wasn't even aware that this was on and what was going on with it, so sorry about that.
Yes. Louise?
This isn't what we.
Now, now, this is more than what we're supposed to get, isn't it, the entire packet?
Last, very last, please.
That's all we should have right now.
Okay. So you're all instructed to only look at the last page?
Yeah, right.
Too late, I already looked at the picture on the front.
Okay, so the property owner is going to make the first presentation?
Madam Chairman, could I interject? Could we have the potential witnesses sworn before we start the big hearing, please?
Anyone that is going to be a witness to this hearing, would you please come forward and be sworn in? Mr. Park, is your wife going to be also test?
If necessary. I'm Harvey Park. My wife.
Well, if, just in case she's going to be, let's go ahead and have her sworn in too. We're, sorry, you're all standing here. We're going to take a few-minute recess while we get the information we need to do the swearing in. to do the swearing in.
Madam Chair, before we get started here, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself from sitting on this panel for a couple of reasons. One, I am under contract for up to two years to sell a piece of property, a couple of parcels, adjacent, probably about 500 feet away, and one of the comparables that you used for land was one that I actually owned and did benefit from, so I'm gonna-
Okay.
Just step away from this.
Thank you Supervisor, very good. Okay, are you ready Jeremy?
Yes, I need everyone to come up, please. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in the matter now pending before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Would you state your name for the record, please?
Harvey Park, and my wife Karen Park is here. Also, I have three folders with the information about our case, and all the information I'm going to read about, so I don't know who to give them to, I didn't know it would be from a four-
Is it something that you need us to look at during this?
Yes, here's the application that was mentioned earlier.
Then you can pass those out to us, and Martha and I can share.
I have three, so.
Oh, okay, so they'll share.
Okay, well anyway, I'll start with my little speech here. Good morning, we're Harvey and Karen Park, which you already know. These folders contain facts and figures we believe to be what you need for this meeting, and should be helpful in obtaining a fair value for the assessor to use to evaluate our home. Without this information, we know it would make your job difficult. The green note attached shows a correction in our paperwork I discovered just late last night, and needs to be added to the cost of the structures for coastal upgrades, stainless steel, miscellaneous weather-related costs, et cetera. I apologize to that error. And I think, I'm just going to read my letter now, which is, you all have a copy of, I believe. So regarding our applications for change of assessment, we believe our home, which is a factory-built kit home, delivered and assembled on-site, should be assessed lower in value than a conventional stick home, because the cost of our kit home includes pre-mated exterior walls, 20 inches on center studs instead of 16 inches on center of that of a conventional stick-built home. With windows and doors installed, the roof is shingled and the ceiling complete and painted, plywood floors, interior structure walls, decks, and skylight. Contractor labor included, the home price was $83,774. And there's a brochure, the second, second little brochure that will explain the benefits of the home. The home may be different in looks, but in actuality is less in value than a site-built home. According to, according to local real estate agents, their home would be worth less than a comparable home on the market because it's prefab manufactured kit, and because it is round. They believe a rectangular home is more desirable. And there's also a letter from a Realtor with their information. As you can see in the back of the pamphlet there, we have a few comparables for you to look at, because according to local Realtors, the market in Delnor County, along with California, all of California's depressed, and most sellers had to decrease their home prices significantly, or chosen to remove them from the market. An example, on our street alone, Gilbert Way, we have two lots and five homes that have been listed for years. Some have lowered and lowered their prices, and others have just taken them off the market due to the depressed real estate market. The current property value throughout the state, you all read it, I'm sure, the state have dropped considerably, yet our property is increasing value, just the property loan for $80,000 to $101,000 currently, and that's an increase of 27% just on the land. And the current tax rule indicates our home assessed valued at $294,845. We have an actual value of $175,764, plus that green note that I put there was $4,000-something addition. And that's an overtax amount of $119,81, plus that figure, or minus that figure. Currently, we believe our assessor, Steve Hart, has our home unjustly assessed higher than most other homes on our street, even though some of these homes have more square footage, and some even have separate living quarters. And if you would, you can see an attached list of parcels with the various taxes and so forth. Also, Mr. Hart, throughout our building process, has assessed our improvements higher than the actual value. An example we have here, number one, when we had our foundation poured, he was probably not aware of it, obviously, but when we had our foundation poured, he assessed it at $24,000, yet the actual cost is $13,960. That's an overage of $10,040. Number two, and when our garage was built, he assessed it at $28,000, yet again, the actual cost is $16,645, another overage of $11,355. Total overage on these two items alone are $21,395, and overage we have been paying taxes on yearly, not to mention the overage he has assessed on our home. In conversations with Mr. Hart about his assessments, we find how our home is factory-built, and with less materials than a conventional stick-built home. Example, one would be in the 20-inch on center, et cetera, space to 16-inch on center. And how we're going, and how we weren't going to put in granite counters and a kitchen and a bath, and we were just going to paint our plywood floors. And there's some brochures, and they're showing very nice painted floors, which is not uncommon for them. He disagreed with us, and said he had prefab homes on Pebble Beach Drive that he has assessed at over $1 million. And said he will be able to tell what kind of counters and floors we will use and assess and access our home accordingly. I'm going to repeat that again, he said he will be able to tell what kind of counters and floors we will use and assess our home accordingly. Seems like it'd be a mind-reading situation, but anyway, sorry. And he told us, he put us in a higher category tax, or seven tax bracket. We're very upset with his attitude, and called the assessor's office and asked for another assessor to be put on our home, but we're told he's the only one. As you can see, we feel our taxes previously charged and currently charged are unjust, and respectfully request that our home and improvements be placed on a much lower tax category and to current market value, and request the appropriate credit began for past years. Also, we feel it is currently assessed $115,000 too high, and with the current depressed market today, should even be more of a reduction in value. I think I have brochures and costs of the, in the files there, in this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Hart, and I'm with the Delnor County Assessor's Office. And some clarification, what we're looking at now is not property values today. We're looking at an assessment 1109, is assessment period. So today's values are not really appropriate for this. And then, another point of clarification with Prop 13, we don't reappraise property every year, so you can have a larger parcel, a larger house next to you that has not been appraised and brought to market value for years. So comparing your property to the neighbor's property is not a good way to discern what your assessment should be. Okay, so the subject is a 2,560-square-foot house, 723-square-foot detached garage, situated on a 61-by-112 ocean front lot. The house and septic system were the subject of the 1109 appraisal. The appraisal was done pursuant to Revenue and Taxation Code 71. The house was 90% complete with 5% depreciation for age at the time of the appraisal. The assessed value of the house and septic was $24,000. I won't go into the calculations there. The factored base year of the garage was $29,713, for a total improvement value of $283,713. The factored base year of the land was 101,176, giving the property in assessment $384,889 for the 2009-10 roll. The house was completed on 7/8/09, and I was denied access to the property for the final appraisal. The application filed on the regular assessment, not supplemental assessment, calls into play the total property value, not just the improvement value. And as we go, here's a picture of the house on the next page. Here's a few maps that are shown, the ocean, this, the first one is the subject. The next page there is one of the comparables, and the next page there is just for information only. It's actually past the date to be a comparable. It shows even as the market started declining, there was one sold, an undeveloped lot that was inferior, sold for $115,000.
And when was that sold?
That one, if you go past the pictures back, there's a little spreadsheet of the comparables. That was sold on, in January of 2010.
And what was the date again that we're supposed to be looking at?
We are looking at 1109. So I got three comparables here of various residents in Delnor County. And if you look at the spreadsheet there, the sizes, what they had sold for. And I have another one down here, that the two that are highlighted, kind of the pink, are for information only, showing, the one that's dated 809, the one at the bottom, is not a comparable for this hearing, but if you look, you've got an inferior house that is sold for $512,000. So that kind of gives you an indication what the market is like.
Is Chrissy Road in California?
Yes, it's right there. This one right here is right by the bug station.
Okay.
And in looking at your comparables, the only ocean-front comparables you have are not true comparables?
Actually, if we look at the one dated 508, it's on Pebble Beach Drive, and it was sold just a few months prior to the 1109, and it sold for $248,500. And actually looking at the map, and if you look at the one, the subject in that one, the one that sold for $248.5 is, in my opinion, is inferior to the subject.
You got a picture comp for?
There is no picture, because it was just land, but there's-
What's the address?
Do not know. But if you look at the second map page, it's highlighted as number eight. So it is on the east side of Pebble Beach, there is, so you're not ocean-frontage, and it's sold for $248.5.
So is there a different formula that you use when you're, when you have like a, kind of a prefab home as opposed to a stick-built? Is there a different formula that you use in assessing?
Not necessarily. In this case, I had spoken with Parks years back, and I understood, and you know, we had talked about how some of these kit houses have appraised at 10%, 15% less than market value, and that I said if they were willing to work with me, we could explore the options when we get down to the final appraisal. Let's really look at its value. But subsequently, they did not work with me, did not show me the house, so that's kind of out the door. And then if you take and look, I, there's what, I think it was Dr. Lous House on Pebble Beach, is a kit house, and it's listed for $1 million, or whatever it's listed for. So under true disclosure, if you want to tell your Realtor, yes, it was a kit house, and it should sell for less than the neighbor, or you could not disclose that, and nobody's going to know the difference.
Steve, what about some of the discrepancies on the, you know, for example, on the foundation pour being almost half of what it was assessed for, as well as the garage build-out? Is there a set formula that you're following, or are you, I mean, how are you rubbing those figures? If you only spent $14,000 on doing the actual pour, how do we rub it 24?
Okay, on the, I was, I'm not privy to what happened on the foundation, but on the garage, it was an owner-builder, and if we go to page-
Okay, okay.
The one that says Assessor Handbook 501, so Parks relayed to me that the kit, they had purchased a kit, and the family put it together. So all the, their cost is not all the necessary components for the appraisal.
Was that the situation with the foundation then too?
I don't know about the foundation. I only remember the garage, and then I finished the residence.
And then you weren't, you were not able to go inside the house after the completion?
No, I was not.
So is there a, is there a formula, square footage formula now that rule of thumb? Or are you going by all comparables, or is there a square footage value now that different areas are going by for valuation?
We have a cost guide given to us from the state.
Right.
And in these situations where we have to do what is called a lean date check, we have to go out and assign a value to the construction and progress, so you have to go out and look at it and use some judgment, because at some time, some point in the construction, it's not completed enough to really tell what it is. So what I looked at was the uniqueness of the round house. So I classed it a half a class higher than I normally would had it been a square house. So that would have been the only difference, but yes, we get state guides.
And what is that square footage price now? Is it, is it a-
Okay, now would be irrelevant, so what we have-
Then.
Okay.
We're not supposed to be looking at anything now, but then, what was the, what was the square footage price?
$114.45. And then today it might be 90.
And there, you weren't, you weren't allowed to access back in for final evaluation or final appraisal?
No, I was not.
So is, is there an opportunity for the property owner to now go back, or not go back, but now, from now on, say that the property value is less, and be-
Reassessed.
Be reassessed? This, this application, I'm presuming, is going back to 2009?
Yes.
So at 2009, it appears as though things are pretty accurate on your part. But now that the values have gone down, can he apply for a reassessment that would be less? And you're, and I'm taking this as your opinion now, would it be less now, today, than what it was assessed at then? Is that what he should be looking for?
It appears in the package that they did request a Prop 8, which is a decline in value reappraisal. I have not seen the form till today, so. But one thing you look at when you have a low base year on ocean-front property, the chances of it declining below the assessed value are, it's hard. Because looking at, even if you factor, I don't know what, if there's a downward trend, how to really quantify it, trend, how to really quantify it, because we can come up with a percentage. But if you take that one sale from 809, and it was $512,000 for an inferior property, and then if you come up with even a 10%, 20%, whatever percent, and apply it to that, I don't think it's going to qualify for decline in value.
I have a question. Going back to, you used a higher ranking because of the uniqueness, the roundness of the house?
Yes.
Being round? See, I would think, as a past realtor, to me, this would be just the opposite for me. This home is not going to appeal to as many people because of it being round. It's not a standard home. Where does it, is this in the state books?
No, that was my decision looking at it. So it was my judgment. And then, and this could have all been clarified pretty much had I've been allowed in the house to see exactly what it looked like. So if it was, you know, it is possible that even though it being round, in my initial opinion, that it was worth a little more, had I seen it, we could have adjusted it accordingly.
I think possibly the uniqueness of it would maybe attract a different level of clientele, of it being...
What do you mean a different level? You think people at a higher level than you or me like a round house?
Well, I'm just thinking if you're, if you're, if you're, if you, maybe like you that have a lot of money...
Yeah, right.
You may be looking at that...
I live in a mobile home.
And maybe manufactured housing. Maybe looking at a different, a more unique look, that's all I'm saying. You're probably not going to attract your classic homeowner for that type of construction, possibly.
So along the same lines as Supervisor McNamara's saying, how would that change your assessment if, if in fact, it was just either compared to a standard home or actually a lesser based on the uniqueness of the shape? I mean, how would that change your, your initial assessment?
The cost factor would come down a little, so the assessment would be less. But looking at comparable sales of these other homes, when you compare it to that, I think that renders that moot.
Okay.
Because you look, if you look at our comparables in here, what they sold for, that's going to be our ultimate guide.
Sure. No, I understand the comp side. I'm just wondering if, if in fact, on the, on the round shape of it, it actually brings it back a little bit, how much that would lower the assessment in respect to that, in terms of taking the same approach, that it would be more difficult to find somebody to buy it versus, because it's not standard. I mean, taking the location completely out of the factor, but just based on the, the shape of the house.
I'd like to say something. Unfortunately, at the time of the appeal, we're, he's appealing the full property value, not just the house.
Right.
So we have to look at it as a package. So maybe the assessment of the house may go down a few thousand dollars, but the land value would go up. So we've got to look at the full package. So he, like Steve said, we can do, look at it for a Prop 8 for this year, and we will look at those adjustments. But unfortunately, you look at the full package, you just don't look at the individual items. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, on board members?
Well, I just think we've looked into these home, homeowner-built projects before, and it's, you know, it's kind of the same thing that always comes up. They, they don't expect that they'll get assessed for their, for their work that they put into it. And I mean, that's, I think that's just about every one that's ever come before me is, is kind of a homeowner participant of the project, and, and somehow, they don't think their labor should be assessed. And that's not the case that we've ever run into, so.
Yeah, we have had one in the past where it was the same situation. And that, that is one thing that's hard to understand, Mr. Park, that even though your, your family may have put this home together, it still has to be priced as if, yes, as if a contractor put it together. Can I have him speak again? I don't either. I don't know what the rules are as far as letting him speak again.
This is an informal procedure, so if the board wishes to have...
Sure, yeah, we may have some questions for you.
Yeah, we understand that. And the, the majority of the home was built at a factory and work, was comp paid there and so on. And we had factory people that, that installed, but we were there, we had myself and two other family members there, an average of 162 hours, that we, we would do some screwing together and caulking and so forth. So we had, we understand that. I don't know where to start on the rest of it here, because I haven't had the county's information to me either. But it seems to me like they're using some old comparables. And in the back of the folder there, we've got some comparables as of yesterday.
But that's not what we're... That's absolutely what we're not supposed to look at.
Okay, but if you consider the fact that we've been paying taxes...
It has to be at the time that assessment was made on your home. The comps do. The comps have to be...
But they're comparing a comps with a stick-built, site-built home. That doesn't seem quite the same to me. And you see the difference in price and so on.
I don't know how many kit-built houses we have in Delano County altogether. I don't. Just one that you're aware of, the Dr. Louse, that would be...
The larger issue, though, is that these comps are time limited. And so a comp from 2011 is completely beyond what the board can consider.
Right.
You have a very limited timeframe for the date of your assessment to consider comps. So I would ask the board not to consider those.
For me being a, well, what's the word, someone that doesn't know about this, I didn't realize they were just going on 2009. On my paper there, my letter, I have highlighted all the years, the previous years, and highlighted in yellow that we were discussing. I didn't realize it was just 2009.
So...
Do you, any, do you have any more questions?
I, yeah, is there any reason you didn't let him in for the final assessment?
We live in Redding.
Yeah.
And, and it's difficult just to come over any time. But I was, again, under the impression that appraisals are based on square footage, and they have the square footage. I mean, you can see, we do have plywood floors today. We have countertops, like we still showed in there, and the counter, the cabinets and so forth. You can see in the brochure basically what the home is. Maybe he didn't have a brochure. It shows our home, the, the ceiling that it shows there is exactly the same. We have a skylight in the center. So, and if he's talked to the factory, I assume maybe that he had that information. But it wasn't that, say, well, no, we just don't want you to see our house. It was inconvenient, and assuming it was on square footage, what difference would it make? As a layman, that's what I went by.
Well, because, I mean, you mentioned the brochure, but we could all look at the brochure, but it doesn't mean that that's exactly what your home is.
Well...
We don't know that for sure without going in it.
Yeah, well, yeah, if you look, I understand. But if you look at the picture on the outside and the picture he took of our home, it's identical. So, but I think all the information is in there regarding all of our costs. I just feel that the compar, comps that they've given aren't, I understand they aren't comparable. But if I hadn't known this, I would have gone back to 2008 and 2009 to some realtors and said, get some other comps, because I think those comps are high and inaccurate.
Any other questions, sir? Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got one more thing to say. Yes, speaking of the comparable sales, our office, we get all the listings, so I get to see all the comparables in the county for every year. So in this property here, there was few and far between. So the four comps that I stated were the comps that were the most comparable. So you could find other sales, but those are the most comparable.
Yeah, just for, just a matter of recourse, it's Prop 8, 8, I think he said, that he, I mean, this is not an appeal on Prop 8, it's, but he could come back and appeal or ask for reassessment based on Proposition 8.
Yes, and I believe in the package in here, there is one requesting, so I do have a request.
Okay. But that's not what we're running on today?
No, we're looking at the assessment as of 1109.
I just wanted to verify too. We get plans all the time for houses being built. And if we just went by the square footage, all houses would be the same. You know you can have a 2,000 square foot house, it could be just absolutely gorgeous inside, or you may have one that is just built barely above code. So this is why it's imperative that we do go inside the houses, because we don't know how it is finished. And that's how we make the determination on how to classify the house. We look at the type of materials, and we want to know if it's high end, low end. And I'm not saying that Mr. Park didn't do this exactly the way the kit was, but we have had that in the past. In fact, we've even had plans handed into us that we go out and all of a sudden, they're four or five thou, or four or 500 square feet larger. So we really have to look at this seriously and determine the, the type of materials used and for our honest classification of the house. So, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other comment regarding this? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
We would have to make a motion. I would take it in order for something to change from what it is.
Yes.
Otherwise, it would stay the same.
Otherwise, it's to stay the same.
Okay, hearing no motion. Everything remains the same.
But it does leave, one of the avenues that Mr. Park, Mr. Mr. Park do have is they can appeal under Prop 8 for reassess, for this year, for reassessment on the property. So that is an avenue. I would check with the Major Development Department, or, excuse me, check with the Assessment Office to find out what needs to be done to apply...
But you have the application. They have it in the package.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I will adjourn as the Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Pardon? We're going to take a, just about a three-minute break. We're going to take a, just about a three minute break. And open the public hearing, wait full reading, read by title only, and introduce an ordinance regarding industrial waste pretreatment which revises chapter fifteen point two eight, fifteen point three two, and fifteen point one two of the Delnar County Code related to wastewater, wastewater as requested by the Deputy Director of Engineering and Roads.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're asking for this revision so that our pretreatment ordinance will be consistent with the cities. And that way we can both satisfy the Water Quality Control Board as far as discharge. I have our expert on discharge here, if you have any questions of the technical nature, and also attorney for the city, so. Any questions?
You're really only talking about effluent that's going into the sewer system?
Correct.
That I thought we gave to the city, anyway.
Well, we have to clean up our ordinance.
Yes.
It's still going to go there, I bet. This is just going to clean up the ordinance.
Sure. I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, do we have any public comment on this item? Hearing none. Jeremy, would you, do we need to pull this vote?
Just enter.
We're, we're accepting the ordinance and waiting until it will come back to us.
Wait for.
Now it will come back?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
The ordinance.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
We're waiting the, the.
Full reading.
Well, yeah, we're waiting the full reading and the reading title.
Being introduced.
Not to approve, but to deal with processing.
Jeremy, prior to pulling the vote, I need to close the public hearing, thank you. Now you can pull the vote.
So the motion was to wait full reading, read by title only, and introduce an ordinance regarding industrial waste pretreatment. Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
The other way, the city and county are working well together, thank you.
General Government approved the two thousand eleven Public Safety Realignment Plan submitted by Community Corrections Partnership.
Good morning, Tom Crowell, Chief Probation Officer, and Chairman of the Community Corrections Partnership. At this time, the Community Corrections Partnership is seeking approval of the plan as submitted. And any questions you might have?
I don't have any questions, Tom, I think you did one heck of a job and I'm glad that you're the one that's in charge. I think that, I think the rest of the state, especially those counties that are having trouble with this issue, and not too many are, could really learn by your lead. The sheriff made some mentions of some of the negatives, that I don't necessarily share those, but we are going to be continuing to address some of the issues you pointed out about concurrent sentencing with the governor, trying to put a cap on, on those, and understanding the politics behind that. But, great, great plan, and I think you're committed to making it work, as is this community, as is this board. Good job.
I would move to approve the two thousand eleven Public Safety Realignment Plan as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any public comment on this item? Hearing none. Do we need to pull the vote on this, Mr. Chairman?
I have a.
I guess I have a couple.
Oh, sorry.
And it was just a, just for public statement that I am in, in, in great support of the plan. I want to see, I'm excited about the electronic monitoring, that that can be a piece of it. I'm also excited about the possibility of work crews, that that I believe should be a piece of it. I am leery of the amount of mental health services that are going to need to be addressed, and possibly the cost of medical in case we have people that, I'm not clear on that. I know that right now, we have people on home detention, their insurance covers if they're hurt. I don't know how that's going to be tested in the court system if we're going to actually end up being responsible as detainees, and so that, I've already asked you to try to make sure we have clarification on that, but I just wanted to publicly say that those were some of my concerns that I had had that I discussed with you in a previous meeting, so I say good job. And I'm also a little unsure of the judge's role in appointing the public citizen to the parole committee. What was the title of it?
It's a county parole.
County, is it a county parole board, or just?
It's a, it's a county parole board.
Yes, so, that one's just got me a little, a little miffed because I wasn't sure what the terms were, I wasn't sure what the expertise were to, you know, what we were going to seek, seek out, because that wasn't really clarified, but that may be somewhere else in, in ordinance or codified somewhere else.
It is, it's in the penal code, and it's pretty clear, and I'll give you the section.
Cool, thank you.
The other thing was that I did confirm that the home detention folks, or anybody that's on house arrest, they are covered by medical, so I have a letter.
Or covered by, by medical or their own private insurance.
Right, yeah.
That's good. And I just want to say that I am in agreement with you that historically, as a nation, and as a state, and as a county, incarceration is not, is not what assists people in being able to be, become people who can contribute to our communities. I think it's through program, and like you say, evidence-based cognition, that we get people to change their paradigm of thinking of, of who they are and why it's important to be a citizen. So, I think this will work.
But there are those who need to be in there.
That's right.
That's right, we, we still agree with that.
And it's, it's going to be our job to determine which ones really need to be there.
So I'm excited, thank you.
I echo everything that's been said also, Tom. But my, one of my concerns is with the ranking. We, we talked about, you know, a level three compared to a level four, and who gets to determine that? You know, they send us a out of control person that we don't believe is ranked the same level that they have it ranked. Who wins that battle? The state. We're going to end up giving them anyway.
In that situation, what ends up happening is that the offender's release date is set, and so you can argue and haggle and do all you want, but that individual's coming out on that day.
Right.
So, once they leave the facility, they are no longer under CDCR jurisdiction, so that pretty much defaults to the counties. And pretty much, the, these folks, they're going to be here anyway. And so even the high-risk folks that we're concerned about would have been released on that day to our county regardless.
So then why are we even?
Well, there's, there's laws.
Why are we even ranking then?
Well, because we need to know exactly who that person is and what their record was in the institution and all of that. At the end of the day, I think it's just about accountability and making sure that everybody's doing their part. And through this effort, I can tell you that there's a lot of cleanup going on at CDCR. The records are being exposed to other jurisdictions, and everybody's kind of going through the dirty laundry of what's been, you know, because they have the chronological reports in the files. So I think overall it will be good. The, the one area though, if they're a seriously mentally ill person, an MDO is what they're called, then those we need to really make sure that they stay, you know, with state jurisdiction if it's appropriate because of the services. And so, other than that though, the folks that would have been in our community on parole would still be accessing the same services that they're going to be accessing now. We're just going to have to, you know, make sure that we're monitoring everybody very closely and, but.
Okay.
Well, you probably have a better level of supervision now, since it, than you would if it was under a state parole, having counted probation, and we also can probably access more services or make sure that those individuals have access to those services that perhaps somebody out of Humble County didn't really care, or Sacramento.
Maybe, I just know that we have limited services in our community, but we're not alone. Most rural counties are struggling, they're suffering the same as we are. And so the good news is that the numbers that are coming back are pretty low. And that's because of the sentencing schemes that we've been using for years and, and kind of our approach to, to criminal justice. In some counties, they're going to be overwhelmed and they have, you know, limited resources like we do. So there's some, there's some, you know, minor good parts of this is that the impact shouldn't be as bad. It's just going to be monitoring the folks that are coming back very closely.
Any other questions?
Well, in addition, I, I did want to address the electronic monitoring, monitoring component of that. The law pursuant to Penal Code Section twelve oh three, point zero one six, and zero one seven and zero one eight, need, we need approval from the Board of Supervisors to pursue various electronic monitoring programs. And so some of those are pre-trial, and some of them are dealing with overcrowding, and the other one is dealing with release to programs. So, it used to be that misdemeanors could be released, and now we're seeking approval that, based on the correctional administrator's opinion, which Sheriff Wilson and I will be working together, perhaps along with the parole commission once it's up, to determine who should be eligible and all that. The, the big difference now is that it can be involuntary. So, pretty much in the past, it's been a voluntary process where the offender was requesting to go on electronic monitoring. Now, they can be directed to. So we'll have to see how that works out, but, but we are seeking approval of the board to, to pursue those.
And that's already.
That's part of the plan.
It is incorporated in the plan, yes.
Okay, I think Mr. Wilson would like to.
Sheriff Ian Wilson, and again, I wish to thank Tom Crowell for, for all his hard work. I know him and I have spent a lot of time in Sacramento, a lot of time talking to our colleagues and, and our respective boards, and, and ramping up for AB one oh nine and trying to do the best we can with a bad situation. This state dump onto local counties is haphazard at best. There's still a lot of cleanup that needs to be done. There's still a lot of situations that we don't know, because we haven't been able to determine what the effects are going to be. And as we come to them, we will, we will deal with them in, in the appropriate manner. I want to reiterate how critical it is, I know both for California State Sheriff's Association, but also for CSAC, to make sure that we continue to pressure our legislature and the governor to continue his commitment towards having a constitutionally guaranteed funding source for this program. Without that, it is going to be impossible for counties to meet this obligation, to deal with this situation without continued and guaranteed funding that will increase with the responsibilities that local government is, is now being burdened with in an area that we were traditionally having to deal with. The other issue, especially for Delnar County, is looking towards and supporting the transfer, as it's going through, for the fire camps. Fire camps are critical to many of the situations that we get up here, not only in fighting wildfires, but in the services it provides to Humboldt, Delnar County. Those alter camp crews are out there, and they do quite a bit of cleanup work, fire prevention work, and a lot of road crew work. And if we can support that program, that they're still trying to figure out how it's best going to work. But I do know that the process, at least tentatively, is slated that we can commit individuals that are, that are of good health and of physical ability to do that work. We can commit them to that, that those kinds of programs that would normally be sitting in the county jails can go to fire camps, and the cost to the county out of the monies that we are given is about forty-five dollars a day, which is quite a bit less than what we're paying at the daily jail rate that, that we're currently doing through the whole county jail. So, those programs need our support, and I, I behoove that as we go forward, that, that the board support those efforts by the state to continue those programs and to continue that funding.
Thank you, Sheriff Wilson. Okay, Jeremy, I had a motion and a second.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Number sixteen, approve the reorganization of the Veteran's Service Office and approve the following. Effective the first pay period, January eliminate one account clerk and one assistant veteran service officer. And effective the first pay period, January establish one veteran service officer range forty-three A and one office assistant one-two-three, range nineteen A.
And the board's packet is a report regarding the current situation through the Veteran Services Office. Jerry Cochran is our current Veteran Services Officer. The Veteran Services Officer is required to be a veteran. Cochran has been the volunteer Veteran Service Officer for several years now, which has assisted the county in, in saving money. Previously, there was a Veteran Services Officer before he left, and Mr. Cochran volunteered. At this time, we have a retirement in the office, as well as another staff person who's going to be out permanently. And Mr. Cochran has indicated that he would like to retire from being the Veteran Services Officer. Also included this is that for the last, now, close to forty years, Jerry has also been responsible for the veteran cemetery. And in conjunction with that, about a year ago, with the transfer of the Crescent Fire Protection Building on Cooper Street, back to the Fire Protection District, there was an agreement to maintain the old county cemetery. So at this point, we have some dynamics that have all come together at the same time. And the recommendation before the board today would put in a primary staff person with clerical support. And as mentioned in here, this is technically a division under administration, so there would be some additional support as we get this ramped up. Jerry has indicated that he would assist, for free, of course.
You better get back in here before we.
That he would assist in the transition.
You can't retire.
It's too, you're too late.
You're stuck.
You already did it?
You're stuck for another forty years.
He indicated that he would assist in the transition.
Yes, I will.
We refused your resignation.
I didn't resign.
Officer.
I said, I'm quitting. You know, after, see, I've had the cemetery for thirty, thirty-five years, I think, or almost that. And I wanted to help the county out with the Veteran Service Office because Fred Josie had retired, and, and Lindell was not a veteran, so she couldn't take it over. And of course, I have the office across the hall, and they, they indicated that I would just be a figurehead. And it, and sometimes it gets a little more involved in that. Jay has a tendency, people who want to be crybabies, he says, well, call Cochran, he'll take care of it. So.
Good job, Jay.
So.
Delegation.
Lindell is retiring, of course, at the end of the year, and we're certainly going to miss her. And I want to get out of, as far as possible, and get someone, start training and doing that. The little gal that was our administrative assistant or clerk, she is going to end up on a disability. Not, not, well, I know, I'm not exactly sure how that's going to work. But she has not been in the office for five months, so it's been a little tedious over there. And so, starting, starting Monday, Lindell and I will go over the list of people that Mr. Young gives us, so we can hire a clerical person to start, start the training there. And then when we get, get the qualified Veteran Service Officer, then we'll work with him. And also, Lindell had indicated that she would, she would assist in the training, so, you know. You got, you get a lot of free service out of people over there at the veterans. Any problems?
And we appreciate.
Well, I'm sure you do.
Everything you've done.
All right.
Absolutely.
And volunteering your time.
Oh, I wasn't quite sure, I'm waiting for the Smith River Ranchery to cough up with a little lute that's on my list here, unless that's a mistake. Is that right?
Which lute?
Well.
It's a partial, for, for finance.
It's a partial funding, yeah.
Oh, sorry. There's a typo in that report.
That's not kind of what I, but I did, I want to thank you in case they were.
In case it happens.
Just in case it happened. And the Office of Emergency Services, they, Cindy goes, she took off, she could even help, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
So financing is the county and?
It is the county, and through the state of California also. But the, the bottom line on this one is that it will hopefully put a person in the position who, as Jerry said, I've, I've leaned on him numerous times to get involved with some of the veterans' issues, gives them a voice, and they know the person, they're able to go to that person, and that person can then reach out to whatever services are there. You know, we have a great structure over there, a great place for the vets, and a, and a lot of the activities. And I would like to thank Jerry. He obviously has dedicated himself to the county for a number of years. And I have given him a hard time over the last few years, but that's, that's my job, so. I do appreciate it, Jerry, thanks, and we will be seeing you over the next few months, for sure.
Thanks, Jerry.
Do I have any public comment on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and two seconds. Flip a coin or whatever. And Jeremy, could you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Moving on to hold the discussion regarding the city's proposal to amend the joint powers agreement between the city of Crescent City and the county of Delnar, creating the solidly management authority. Discuss and take action as necessary.
And the board's packet is a report that was prepared through the city of Crescent City, as well as the proposed third amendment that was also prepared by the city. In discussing this with the chair, we placed this on the agenda to have a discussion as necessary in regards to the meeting tonight and any actions that may happen tonight. That's, that will be a joint discussion. The city was of the benefit of having a meeting and having this discussion prior to bringing forward the information you have here. So this gives the board an opportunity to discuss any last-minute issues. If there are no issues, we'll move into the meeting tonight and have that as a joint discussion. But this gives the opportunity to go over what the city has proposed and have any type of discussion you'd like to have.
Thank you, Jay.
Well, I, I think that since the city is not, not interested in an ad hoc committee that, that we should, I would move that we disband that or, or make that null. And that we, and since the city, or I guess the city manager came up with a plan, which I, I'm glad to see. I think it's, I think it's a great start. So I would make a motion that we remove the ad hoc committee, since the city was not interested in going along with that anyway, at the very least. And, and if there's any approval that we need to, to go into this meeting with, I think it's a great start to a plan, so.
I just have a couple of procedural questions in relationship to county. And as, if we meet as a board, is counsel, is our counsel required to also attend?
As a board for the Board of Supervisors?
Well, when we meet as a, as a ten-member board, will we need to have our counsel in attendance? Okay, so that will be a cost issue. And then my other one is, is that how is the, what is the number of people that one can talk to without it being a serial meeting with that size of a board?
Six?
I, I would think.
Five?
I would think it'd probably be five.
I don't think, I, see, I don't know, I mean, right now, we can only talk to one other person.
Mm-hmm.
I think you run into the same issue that you need a quorum of both boards, basically. Or you need three votes from each.
Or you need three votes from each.
Well, no, that's...
I'm not...
Right. You understand what I'm saying, asking about?
Mm-hmm.
It's just a point, we just need to know the answer.
Yeah, and I think at this point, I'm going to have to look into it and then give you an answer this evening because off the top of my head, I haven't looked into that issue, but I can certainly do that.
Okay. And then as far as in the proposal, it didn't talk about who, how we were going to elect or create a chair for this ten-member board? Because that agenda review still needs to be done, so that process needs to be defined and identified. And is it necessary to have a chair from one entity and vice-chair from the other? What are the, the details of how the structure of that will happen? And the, I assume it's for the, the entire year, January two-twelve through December two-twelve, that's the language.
And I, I think that's some of the stuff that you can actually discuss this afternoon, I mean, this evening.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that the county went in with its information because I didn't want to be there without, without those answers.
I will get the answers to this.
Any other comment?
Well, I think it's, it allows some things to happen that probably needed to happen. I agree with Jerry that the ad hoc, obviously the city didn't want to act on it and you can, as that one lady said, get hocked to death, so, you know, doing away with that is fine because that gets into personalities. I think it's what it allows, this allows us a couple of things to happen. Number one, there was a member at large. And in JPA's, my understanding is it's a member governments. And so, the public is, has no standing unless one of the entities wishes to appoint a member of the public to represent them, something like we do at the airport.
Or LTIC.
Or LTIC. But that didn't happen with a solid waste. Nobody stood up and said, "Okay, well, you, member of the public, represent the city," or "you, represent the county." No, they said, "You represent the public," which, you know, is questionable at best. I'm not looking forward to trying to structure a ten-meeting board. It took us six months at a minimum to get together with the city council and the Board of Supervisors. I'd be fine with, with a three-member board. I understand that people question the personalities there. I think like LTIC where you have, every member is an alternate, then you have some primaries, but that's fine, however that goes. What it really does is it allows me as a member of the Board of Supervisors now to engage my administrative people, my finance people and my CAO for a recommendation, something that the ad hoc wasn't empowered to do. So, when you start talking about efficiencies, when you start talking about finances, now I get to use the professionals that I rely on on a day-to-day basis for running the county to take a look at the running of that other government entity that I'm a part of. And so, I think it's all good.
Well, and I, I have to say too, the, the difference between the ad hoc and doing it this way is the transparency, the agendized meetings, the public will be involved where they weren't in the ad hoc.
Yeah. And my only question was, and I'll go along with whatever everybody wants to do, as long as you have a majority of each board, fine, that needs to happen, whether that's three, four, or the whole five, whatever.
It appeared that it was three and three, and that would require for the voting structure that was defined. So, that would make six as, as a quorum. I, I think that was all there, I just think that we didn't talk about how it would be agendocized and how review of the agenda would happen, needing counsel from both entities to review the agenda. And we didn't, it didn't also talk about the voting structure because historically, which I, I'm making an assumption that this isn't the pattern it's going to take, but historically, when the city and county meet together, we do separate voting structure where we do separate motions and separate voting. But if this is going to be one entity, it would appear to me that it would be one motion and one vote.
I think that's the way it's intended.
That, that's how I...
It is a government entity and it's just going to have a ten-member board now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and that's my, I think going forward, the most important thing to do is just to take that next step. So, rather than quibble about whether it be three, four, or five people...
Right.
You know, it doesn't mean, it doesn't preclude a recommendation coming back from that ten-member board that it be shaved back to seven or nine or whatever. But I think to take that first step rather than to waste time debating it is important. I think that's what the public wants to see, so going forward, I'd be supportive of it.
Well, and I have a question about, aren't most boards an uneven number?
Mm-hmm.
I, I just have a question of whether or not ten would be the thing because then you've got the possibility of split vote tied.
But you still need three votes from each.
You gotta have three votes from each entity.
And I, and I think that's how they tried to solve that because they did require three votes from each side. However, there's still that potential.
Right, but then there, you're still got an even number.
Well, I guess we'll just have to prove to the public we can work together.
Yeah. Do we have any public comment on this item? Mr. Larson?
Andy Larson in the county. I'm glad to hear that the public needs, I've spent a lot of time researching this myself, have got to talk to some people, but a lot of us out in the public don't really know that the transfer station runs great, nobody's got a problem with it. I've got some real issues with some accountability, some transparency, like, like anybody's trying to do anything wrong, but it just isn't transparent and the public needs transparency. I've got an issue with stipends, stipends to public officials. I understand why it was ever put in, nice little thing, but in today's world, it just doesn't get it. That needs to change. I have a problem with an unelected person on that original board making ordinances. We have no, as a public member, I have no recall. You, I can go out and campaign against, we're campaigning for. But I, I'm, from what I'm hearing, yes, sit down, let the public, we're not going to get mean. You know, we just, we really want to see some transparency and, and know what's really going on. It, it runs well? Do we need the board? What do we need? You're elected to tell us along with the city.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Lonsdale?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Bill Lonsdale and I live in Crescent City. And I applaud the direction that I think your Board is taking. The idea that we should have these judgments and decisions made by elected officials is a good thing. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, bring it back to the Board. That's the pleasure of the Board. Any comments, any other comments from Board members?
No, what direction do you want us to take? Do you want us to take this, aside from disbanding the ad hoc, I think, which can...
It's an action of the Chair.
Is it, is it, exactly. Doesn't either vote for the supervisors. Do you want us to mimic the resolution or the direction that the city took so we can go into this meeting on the same page?
That's what I thought we were doing.
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I even need to pull the vote? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Hey, that might shorten the meeting tonight.
That's right. You can tell everybody to stay home.
Oh, no.
We're all being nice. Legislative on budget issues.
The primary legislative issue right now is the hot topic in Sacramento's pension reform. And we're following that to see what political route it's going to take. It's obviously something that's going to be utilized over the next months by both parties and be one of the primary points, I think, that the Governor has, has indicated he wants to go in that direction, so we'll see how it actually goes.
Cool.
And of course, all the other legislation has been, is kind of on, I wouldn't say on hold, but it's there. Before, today, we'll do this quickly.
While you're on legislation, again, asking admin to keep an eye on, and I know you've already done it, letters that need to go out regarding the essential air service, is being considered in the transportation bill and the farm bill. Any surveys that we can contribute on the crafting of the farm bill through RCRC, CSAC would be great.
Notification on the farm bill came in just about two hours ago, and I'll be reviewing that when we're done. And the EAS, I've had discussions with Greg Burns in the last week. It's kind of gone a little bit sideways again, but he will keep us informed of what's happening in Washington, so he and I are in contact.
Good. Yeah, Micah thinks that the only distance for the EAS should be Alaska and Hawaii. There is rural America besides Alaska and Hawaii.
Hawaii?
Yeah.
Pretty rural. Hard to get away.
Well, I know it's hard to get there, but...
It's a long swim.
...when you get there.
And that was it? Jay?
Yes.
And item twenty-one, hold a discussion on a budget impact report. Elk Valley Rancheria knows the termination of the drug task force among you.
The Board of Supervisors had directed staff to look into and report on any budget impact regarding the request or the direction of the Elk Valley Rancheria in removing themselves from the memorandum of understanding regarding the drug task force. Currently, the members of that are Elk Valley, Smith River, and the Delnar County Sheriff's Department District Attorney's Office. The resulting withdrawal would effectively give us about thirty-eight thousand dollar general fund hit. If the position itself was half-funded by Elk Valley, half by Smith River, the general fund would have to backfill that at this point. There has been rumbling that there may be some grand money that might be able to backfill that, and we hope that we can get some answers on that soon because, obviously, this is not something that we budgeted for. So, the impact at this point is about thirty-eight thousand dollars and the community impact could be the reduction of services by law enforcement, specifically the drug task force at the Elk Valley Rancheria parking lot, which obviously they've spent some time working with Elk Valley and not just in drug transportation and sales and the parking lot, but on other issues. They continue to work with Smith River and as far as that's concerned, the services are not going to be reduced at this point. So, the impact will be felt at the end of this year unless there's some backfilling of funds.
Well, we definitely appreciate Smith River Rancheria continuing to contribute to it because it's vital to the budget and being able to have that law enforcement element out there. So, we definitely appreciate that.
Well, it's not just a budget issue. I mean, it is a budget issue, but it also identifies the type of activity and where it takes place. And unfortunately, that's one of the draws. I just saw a brief memo that they were pulling out. Was there a reason?
There was no reason given. That was the, the memo's all there.
I've tried a couple of times, you know, stopping in and visiting with Dale and Jerry and I, and we had the two-by-twos, we haven't had, we don't do that anymore. Communication bothers me as much as the budget does. I just, I wish I had a better handle on why.
I'll tell you my personal opinion later.
Okay.
Well, it's a shame that that partnership seems to be dissolving. It started out at a relatively low level and has gained momentum. It's a shame that we're trying to foster new partnerships and enhance the ones that we have. And, and this, this started out to be a great partnership and is not going in the proper direction in my opinion.
So, does the Sheriff's Office have the money to backfill or is it going to come out of where?
At this point, no, that was not budgeted for. It was budgeted for, it was budgeted to come from Elk Valley Rancheria.
So, where are we?
So, at this point, it would be a general fund.
Thirty-eight thousand?
If it continues this way, it would be out of contingency.
And what's our contingency?
Hundred thousand dollars. That deals with all issues that come up on an annual basis through all budgets.
It's early in the budget year to be taking such a big hit.
It is. And we, you know, in...
How much do we have left of it now?
The timing was not nice.
We have about sixty-two thousand.
It's a third of our...
Depending on how this funding, you know, if, if in fact, there is another funding source, and we'll be looking at that. If there is, then that, that issue is reduced.
Funding is part of it, partnerships and communication is the other part. And I think we need to, maybe I could encourage you to have some communication regarding what needs to be done to enhance this, well, to, to heal this partnership, I guess.
We're going to focus on a PowerPoint project that Mr. Carnegie has been the primary person on. I'm going to go back several years. You want me to do it? I get the click button. As the Board is well aware, for several years, we've been working on some funding through Proposition Forty. And it has covered a considerable amount of parks and recreation improvements that have been in need of attention for many years. And I, we've received nothing but positive feedback in regards to the facilities. I have John Horner here also, who I've asked him to come by and explain some of the partnerships that we've had that have, that have assisted in a lot of the programs he runs, whether it be youth basketball and the, and the recreation gym. And as you see here, unfortunately, this one has a lock on it right now because we had a little issue with people breaking into the recreation gym.
Is that the improvement on it?
Yeah. It's not the... The improvement on the recreation gym was to have all of the windows refurbished and new exterior doors placed on it. The rear door facing north actually was open to the weather to such a point that we had vermin and other animals that could get inside the rec gym. Those doors were replaced at, and the building now is so weather tight that it actually becomes an issue when you have the larger kids playing because of condensation. So, we need to deal with the air handling, which typically means we open windows. But the window issue was also for the Boys and Girls Club when they were in there. The improvements have made this a secure building and a weather tight building, and our youth program continues to use that for basketball. This is the rear door that the bottom of this approximately first twelve inches were so rotted that it was open into the, to the weather. This is one shot of all of the windows on one bank. As you can see, there's a considerable number of windows in this old building. They were done according to standards of the contract. And in this case, I believe this was Rick Parker Construction that was the general contractor and Crescent Glass was the one that did the work, so it's local contractors. The Board will probably recall the loss of that, of the old playground out here on Pike Field and then the ensuing replacement. This structure is used a lot during the summertime, especially during functions, whether it be Little League or adult softball. This particular picture doesn't show all of the improvements. There's some netting that now is over that structure to avoid contact with kids and foul balls and home run balls. The backstops were all replaced. Those were wood backstops. The existing structure is still in place. All of the mesh has been replaced. Many of the rotted support structures were replaced. CMU walls were put up and this should definitely assist with future maintenance. Obviously, this will last longer than pressed board or plywood.
Yeah.
A lot of the fencing was replaced. All of this fencing, the hedge that was along Mackin Street was removed and the road department went in and actually put in some of the grindings so that the parking area is a little bit more, a little wider and the travel way isn't quite as compacted. You can see the yellow stripping of plastic protection above the fencing. In the past, any foul balls where a child or an adult went up over that fence, it was exposed. This is something that's done at most facilities, and definitely is something that people look for when they come to the facilities. Siding and paint for all of the score boosts, plus the plexiglass window to protect our scorekeepers, if we do get some wind out there during the summertime. The walls on these were starting to deteriorate to a point that they were, we had replaced doors in the past because the doors had fallen off the hinges, and now we have secure storage areas for bases and other equipment. Dugouts were actually a partnership with Little League, and I'll let John elaborate on this, but these were put in place for protection, obviously, when Little League starts in March, the weather isn't always great, and they do play a lot of times when it's very cold and even to the point of almost raining, and this gives the kids and then the adults as we get into summer protection.
And that's nice for the kids that have to sit on the bench. And you like the times too, but it's bad enough you're having to sit on the bench would have leaves you a little more protected now from the weather.
Yeah, Supervisor Finnegan made a good point. It also separates the kids from the parents, which allows the coaches to coach, and as a former youth baseball coach, that's a big deal. Parents mean well, but they do, they do get in the way sometimes. Again, siding, as you'll recall, the roll up doors, there was actually a handicap accessible door for the concession stand, roll up door for the storage area, and the bathrooms had some improvement done. In addition, we had new hardy panel siding, we have it trimmed out, new roofing, the old skylight areas have been removed, and at this point, this building is as secure as it's ever been, knock on wood, we haven't had any break-ins or burglaries in quite some time. And the bathrooms are going through a remodel also, and Little League is actually, their volunteers are helping tile, and then we're going to provide paint for the floors, the fixtures are all ADA compliant and relatively new. Ruby Van Deventer Park was another one of the larger projects and fairly significant. This shot shows the asphalt paving of the single lane that goes into the park. Typically, what happens is when you get the sloughing off of the redwoods, the roads turn into two tracks, and you don't even know the pavement's there, but the maintenance is completely reduced, because as much traffic as these parks get, they don't get large truck traffic typically, and they don't get a ton of speed. So at this point, I've received a lot of feedback on the ability to get into the park, maneuver through the park, and not have huge potholes. Again, paving around a very large redwood, and we will have some issues with redwood roots and the asphalt, and we anticipate that we'll have to fund some additional patching at some point.
Yeah, Ruby Park turned out good, I'm still waiting for the signs to show where the campsites are at, because that's the map.
We noted. This doesn't look like much, but this is a very elaborate septic system, it's a two-stage filter system, it's an engineered system, and the effluent is essentially clean when it hits the sand filter that's underneath this berm. There were a few small trees taken out as part of this and one large fir tree to accommodate this, but what you have now is instead of a cesspool several hundred feet from the Smith River, you have a state of the art septic system draining out basically clean water. And it will serve, in the future, it could possibly serve showers, as long as we don't go overboard with the amount of quantity that goes into it. Another shot of the septic system. Shot from the top, you can see the new picnic tables, and from a distance, fire rings, you'll get better shots here pretty soon. You can see how attractive this park is, it is absolutely packed during the summertime. Primary reason is we have a riverfront park. It's a great park and is of great use. This is a small kiosk that was rebuilt, re-roofed by our staff, and the graphics, which are hard to see on this one, were presented as part of the Ruby Van Deventer project in concert with Mr. Bennett, and Sue Callow was also involved in, with her company, putting together the graphics. These are a little bit difficult to see because of the glare, but you have the life cycle of the salmon on the right-hand side, you have information on who was Ruby Van Deventer, and then the map on the left side shows a number of facilities, county and state, so that we can get people out to other areas. Fire rings and tables, these tables should last a while, we are still discussing with the state of California what they mean by secure, I think they want every one of them chained down. This park has a lot of flexibility in moving them around, but we may be forced to actually chain these down before we can get our final approvals. And that shot right there kind of tells you why this one's so popular, there aren't too many camping spaces where you can get a tent in, your picnic table, your fire ring, and be right next to the Smith. This is a shot of Florence Keller Park, this is an interior loop road that wasn't being used very much for camping, it actually has the one site that is a full campsite, a full utility campsite, and it's now open for, you could actually get a smaller RV into it, but the asphalt paving now has opened that up, it is in need of repair back there, this is another shot of that same area. Again, the loop that goes around the large picnic area, extremely popular area, weddings, birthday parties, Mr. Horner's used them for both. That railing around there is actually similar to what the state of California has put up on 199, it's concrete. I don't know if we have the slide in here, but it has been backed into and broken, so we have to fix it already. This is a playground that was placed at Florence Keller Park, and Jim would describe it, and he can if he would like to, it's a playground based on the challenge course that's at Florence Keller, and it has everything from the climbing walls to the zip lines to multiple features. This was put in by Rick Rick and Jones Construction, Hemmingson Construction did the paving and the railing. We put sod around the outside of this to make it a little bit more attractive, because there wasn't a whole lot of grass around it, and it really turned out nice. Jim, as well as Barbara Drew from my office, designed this based on the challenge course, and I think it came out as probably one of the best features that we've done out of all of our playgrounds. Fire rings and tables, again, Florence Keller Park, actually in use. This is one of the features that's in the, in the challenge course, this was in cooperation and partnership with the Delano Unified School District. School District actually facilitates it, we built it, we use a third-party subcontractor to the school district to facilitate when the teachers are not available. These are the trails that were cut in or actually chipped over, and as you can see with the redwood duff, they blend in quite nicely. The bosun's chairs, they actually walk across, and I say they, because you won't get me up on it anytime soon, they actually walk across that redwood at the top, that log, and also across those chairs. This is the Birch Track Park, which was one of the first ones we started out with the acquisition of land, and then a second acquisition of land. Rick Rick and Jones got the bid on this playground also and installed it. Extremely attractive, very functional. Fencing was put in by custom construction, Brandon Bieber was the contractor on that. Again, community, the Lighthouse Community Church is a partner in this in the sense that we purchased the property from them, they also provide programs in the area. This is Birch Tracks Park. This is a, the ADA accessible ramp that was required to be put in and railing, and that right now is the bulk of the projects that we've done, I went through that relatively quickly. There's a lot of work that's been done, and a lot of local contractors have worked on this. I think out of all of those projects you saw there, we had Pike Field, Miller Farms got a bid for the fencing and the siding for those, for the features out there, all the rest of them were local contractors, through a full bid process, and they were competitive, and they ended up very well. And John, would you like to say a few words about Pike Field?
I'd say, Jay, those were very nice pictures.
Jim took all the pictures. They're great.
With the pictures?
Well, the biggest thing about Pike's Field that, you know, the improvements I've noticed in the last two years, for sure, is the tournaments that have come to town for the adults. Thirty-four teams actually in our league this year, you look up in Brookings, they have 10. You look as far as like McKinleyville and places like that, they're sitting with 15 to 20 teams. With the improvements to Pike's Field, kid, the families feel more safe bringing their kids there, things over the playgrounds, more attractive as they drive by, wow, there's something big going on in town, let's get to be part of it. Thirty-four teams, that's about 400 adults during the summer that are participating in the adult softball program. Without saying, Little League is one of the biggest partnerships that I've had since I've started here, it was not a very big partnership when I started, we've grown, I've got to know some of the chair people, some of the board members, and a lot of the businesses, they go out and get to donate, Home Depot, Elk Valley Rancheria, and Ace Hardware, actually each one of those built two of the dugouts, you know, donated all the supplies, and they had some donated contractors come in and build them, so, I mean, that was great. Youth football uses it, coming here in about a week, when it gets too dark to practice, we provide those fields over there for all the fee they, we charge is for the lights to be turned on over there, but that's a great place for kids to be able to go out, and there's, I think there's going to be four teams this year in the playoffs, so that's going to be about 150 kids out there on a weekday basis down there using the fields. Update on the facilities, you know, it's, when you drive by, you hear all the time, I've heard a lot from, a lot of people in the sports community, it's something to be proud of out there. You know, improvements are hard to find, you know, in the economy the way it is like this, in any county-run facility like this, and there's been a lot of improvements out there that, you know, that we can be really proud of. Future ideas, the Mural Society, we're talking, I'm talking with them to get something on the newly improved field three out there by the rec gym, that big wall that the city replaced all the siding on. We're talking to the Mural Society, maybe get something that's sports-oriented, kid-oriented, up there to really give it a little bit of flash. In the future, I'd like to do fall and winter softball tournaments, you know, I can't say enough about the softball tournaments they bring, I was having 10 to 12-team tournaments this summer, my whole, my whole summer was booked with tournaments, we had nonprofit organizations come in and do tournaments, the Crescent City Volunteer Fire Department did a tournament for the Relay for Life team, which brought in two teams from Grants Pass, team from Brookings, law enforcement teams that came and spent the weekend, and they really enjoyed the facility, it's going to be an ongoing thing every year for them. Relay for Life also came and set up a bunch of booths down there, so it was kind of a real fun weekend for everybody. Who was the other one? Like I said, Relay for Life, Volunteer Fire Department, and we have a couple of the Rancheries that come and do tournaments, Genevieve Markinson from the Urok tribe, from the Urok tribe, they come down and do the healthy kids tournaments that promote healthy kids for the, for the Indian community, stuff like that. I plan to coordinate with Brookings to get some of their teams down to Crescent City for the leagues. They only have 10 teams up there, they play a couple of times a week. They do the best they can up there, luckily, we have a recreation program here that, you know, you guys provided me the opportunity to be a little bit more hands-on with the recreation department, so I can provide a pretty good service down here, so I'm going to try to coordinate with them. While they can still play there, they can come down and play in our leagues during the week, which will bring a lot more, a lot more businesses down here if they're coming down here on a weekly basis. I mean, all this was made possible by the popularity of Pike's Field, and thanks, Jay, thanks the board for giving me the opportunity to do this. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
I think that John touched on Little League, we've had numerous presidents over the last several years, and with John's help, we've gotten a lot closer with them. Sean Harper is their current president, Sean has a lot of experience at the collegiate level playing, and he was the one that was actually instrumental in getting us, or at least getting us in the right direction on the dirt for these infields. And if you have played on an infield that has rock, and then you step on one of these infield, it's like night and day, and that, the experience is completely different, so we've gotten a lot of feedback on that. I want to thank Jim, who tolerates me when I end up coming to him and saying, we've got to get this done right now. And he's, he's our fiscal manager, he's also been involved in every one of these projects, as well as Barbara Drew, who's done basically all the RFPs and the contracts and everything else. They were pushed through as quickly as we could through our bid process as required, and they're excellent projects. Parks are set now to a point where there's a standard here that we're, now we have to live up to. So it's, there's some excellent projects here, and if we look at this, all of this also relates to economic development, because these will bring people into the community.
Not only that, Ian, I think it's so important that our children have a place to play, to recreate, you know, that ball field's been there forever. I played softball on that field, my husband played, my son played in the adult league softball programs, I mean, I go back as far as the fast pitch when that was played here, and then it transitioned over to slow pitch, and I'm glad to see it coming back. It kind of faded away there for a while, it kind of lost interest, or the people lost interest, some of them.
It's an effort, an effort by staff, but by the board, and the board needs to be congratulated for allowing us to go forward with these projects, because you guys are the ones that prioritize these projects and made an effort to, to at least see that these are, these are important projects for the community at large, because regardless, you see Florence Keller or Ruby Van Deventer Camp Park, these are some shining examples of what we have to give to the public, so the board needs to be congratulated for dedicating that amount of money, but there was a lot of money.
You know, we do great jobs on things, what we don't do a great job on is publicizing that. Do we have any plans for ribbon cuttings at the, either Birch and/or Birch Ocean View Track, the Florence Keller new playground?
I would like to do those when we get the projects completed and everything buttoned up with the state of California. Probably would be best the next spring to go out there, and I would say Ruby Van Deventer and Florence Keller, the playground at Florence Keller is quite impressive, you know, the Birch Track...
I mean, you publicize it, the community, I mean, it's good PR, but it also lets the community know, hey, we got a new playground out there. I mean, I...
Because it's swell.
Yeah.
I mean, kids love it.
Jim, Jim might want to tell you the story of the little kid when he went out to take a picture, you want to tell him that one?
First of all, I'd say, I'm not sure Jay's really interested in ribbon cutting. Ribbon cutting, I think he wants to keep Florence Keller for Emma. But when, when that park at, or the playground at Florence Keller was just completed, we were meeting with the contractor, Marshall Jones out there, we had finished our discussion, we were back by the camp host and ready to leave.